Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, April 25, 2023. The time is 5:30 PM. Just a quick note, our city clerk is unavailable this evening, so our finance HR director will be monitoring and taking the minutes today. I just want to recognize in the audience that we have Jody Grabenowski, our library director, who attends our meetings regularly. And we have our new marketing director for the Iron Trail Motors Events Center, Brianna Coughlin, welcome. And longtime member of Friends of Public Safety is Jan Makowski. So thank you for all being here today, and thank you for everyone listening at home. Jerry, would you please take the roll call?
Motley?
Here.
Counselor Fiedler?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Counselor Biondich?
Present.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Barneselli?
Here.
And Mayor Cuffey?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and we'll move on to item three on the, or four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to come and speak before the council on any subject they'd like to talk about. Is there anyone in the audience that would address the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that these items be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on April 11, 2023. Item 5.2 is adoption of final finance resolution number 23-008, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 approved pay estimate number one to Carl Anderson for home demolition in the public safety area in an amount of $38,675.62. Item 5.4 is to approve the exempt permit for the Holy Spirit Church to conduct a raffle at Marquette Catholic School, 1301 West Chestnut Street, on September 5, 2023. Item 5.5, approve the transient merchant license for Carathrin Orso during business as curbside crepes. Item 5.6, approve the travel request for John Hotchkins of the police department to attend the emergency vehicle operation course April 28, 2023, in Hibbing, Minnesota, at a cost of $200. This is required for their post license for a police officer. Item 5.7 is approve Tom Norman and Ryan Detlaw from the Park Department to attend the new pesticide applicator certification course May 2nd through the 5th in St. Paul at a total cost of $1,332.41. This is the consent agenda before the council today, looking for council action.
We'll move the consent agenda.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support, or support by Counsel Freely? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item six, appearances. There's no one scheduled to appear before the council today. But once again, this is an opportunity for anyone from the audience that would like to address the council, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, unfinished business. Item 7.1, the property at 410 Fifth Street South. I would ask our attorney, Brian Lindsay, if he had any updates regarding the evidentiary hearing. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have that set. Unfortunately, we're not set until out in June.
So the evidentiary hearing has been postponed till June?
We had this, well, we had the scheduling conference, and during that scheduling conference, the date of the actual hearing was set out in June. And if I could look to my calendar, I'll see if I can find that date.
Would you please?
Actually, Mayor, if you move on, I'll find the date and I'll report back.
Okay, thank you. So just a clarification, the scheduling conference was in April. Correct? And now you have a June, you let us know what the June evidentiary hearing timeframe is.
I believe it's June, I'll pull the hearing date.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding 415, 410 Fifth Street South regarding the scheduling conference that's been conducted and the evidentiary hearing that's going to be scheduled for June? And our city attorney will take a look at the exact date and provide it to us and to the Kingsley's as well. Item 7.2 is the clinic lease. We're still working on that, moving forward with it, getting estimates and working in concert with Essential Health as negotiations continue. Are there any questions or comments about the clinic lease? Seeing none, we'll move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is adopt the resolution for lease of a copier for the fire department for a five-year term, ending cost of $165 per month.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2 is adopt the resolution for the lease of a copier in the police department for five years at a cost of $102.54 a month.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson and supported by Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3 is approve the law enforcement mutual aid agreement with the St. Louis County Sheriff's Department.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson and supported by Counsel Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4 is review the draft attendance policy for the International Association of Firefighters, local 390 members. We did review the draft, did we not, Britt?
Yes, this is part of the negotiations that came out of the IFF local 390 negotiations, and now that's ready for the council.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion?
I'll move.
Moved to approve by Counsel Motley? I'm sorry, Counsel Paulson, excuse me, I was looking at my notes, I apologize. Approved by, a motion by Counsel Paulson, is there support?
Support for discussion.
By Counsel Freely for discussion, further discussion, Counsel Freely.
Has this been presented to the union, and have we received any feedback with regard to this?
Yes, the union has looked at it a couple times, and they have no further comments.
Perfect, thank you.
We thank you, Counsel Freely, but it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5, adopt the resolution for the asphaltic concrete, the crack ceiling from Northwest Asphalt and Maintenance for up to 20,000 feet at $1 per foot. We've been doing this on an annual basis.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Reluctantly supported.
Pardon?
Reluctantly supported. But supported nonetheless.
Very good.
How do we know, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go, support by you, Counsel Freely? Okay, further discussion?
So, has anybody gone, this is for the tennis courts at the?
No, this is the crack ceiling for all the cracks on the roads that we have in town. It's something we do on an annual basis, and don't we normally do this in conjunction with St. Louis County on the same bid?
We do on occasion when it makes sense. We do try to, if, when we go out for bids, it's less than St. Louis County's, we'll use our own. If it's cheaper with St. Louis County, we'll jump on theirs.
Well, obviously, then, this has been inventoried, and we're talking about up to $20,000.
Correct, correct. And what you normally do is roads that have been done from eight to ten years ago, you do the crack ceiling. I do know our trails are part of this year's discussion. We want to get out there and get the cracks on the, our trails.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Freely, it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.6 is adopt the resolution for up to 500 tons of crusted rock salt from Morton International at a cost of $95.86 per ton. And again, up to 500 tons of crustic rock salt from Morton International Incorporated at $95.86 per ton.
I'll move that.
Moved to approve by Counsel, Counsel Motley, excuse me, supported by Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'm sorry, Counsel Johnson.
And this is Road Salt? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Road Salt, thank you, Counsel Johnson. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.7, exciting opportunity, adopt the resolution in support of holding the Minnesota Sports and Events 2026 World Junior Hockey Championships at the Iron Trail Motors Events Center.
I'll move the resolution.
Counsel Paulson moves the resolution and supported by Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'm sorry, Counsel Johnson.
Eric, could we have Bree come up and talk about it a little bit? What's, what this is all about?
Uh, thank you. Turn the green light on there, the magic button.
This one?
That's it, you're on.
My first time.
You're on.
I'm Bree Coughlin, I am your new sales and marketing coordinator for the Iron Trail Motors Events Center. We were so fortunate to be contacted by the Minnesota Sports and Events to be a part of a teams call last week, many facilities throughout the state of Minnesota. We feel like we are best suited to hold some of the pre-tournament. The main tournament will be held, hopefully, if Minnesota gets the bid. We're the state of hockey, so it's kind of a no-brainer in my eyes, but we would hope to be one of the pre-tournament sites to host two of the international teams to come here with two ice arenas, many locker rooms, and a lot of things to do in our community. We're hoping to win that bid. So, in the teams call, we, we fit perfectly except for one horrible issue. We do not have onsite laundry, and that's really it. So that bid is going to be going in next week. Nothing like last minute, hey, here's a great opportunity, it's got to be in next week. So Brian Silver has jumped on it, and we're working on getting that, and we just hope to have an enthusiastic approval by the council and the mayor.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say that this is in 2026, so we are hopeful and encouraged, and we want that hotel done, and hopefully it'll be done, that would help significantly, and we're on, we're on, we're on fourth gear on that, so we're in good shape there. Anything else to offer?
Well, we've already spoken with the developer of the Marriott, and he's holding a block of 60 rooms. And we've spoken to some of the outlying, of course, the Coats, the Quality Inn, I believe it is now. Virginia Girl will never call it anything but the Coats, and some of the other hotels, and they're willing to block off 20 rooms for the teams and families and spectators that we expect to come from all over the state. It's a really big opportunity to highlight our community on the world stage.
I'm sure, as you coordinate and market this event, it'll be a, it'll be a big celebration of, you know, out in the patio, wherever we're going to have this, a big welcome and all those kinds of things, I'm sure you're working hard on that.
Tons of opportunities to tour the mines, tour, tour the Hockey Hall of Fame, hopefully, the Hippodrome, we get in there, as it was, you know, the start of hockey in the Northland. So we've been working, Brian has been hard at work, honestly, to make sure that we've got a lot for these worldwide spectators to view and experience here.
And I think as we do this, I'm sure you're looking forward to having some, like some corporate sponsors to sponsor hospitality events and those kinds of things, and bring in other celebrities and things that are natural, and I know you're working on that as well.
Absolutely, my uncle is one of our hometown heroes, Jack Carlson, played for the North Stars. I'm going to be in touch with him, hopefully he'll come up, maybe sign some autographs, some jerseys. Matt Niskanen, we're getting in touch with him as well. And just making a really cool event for everybody who's not familiar with Minnesota, or just thinks we're just some Midwest state, we're really out of the land of hockey, so.
Looking forward to that, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Brianna? You're starting, I may first, and hitting the ground running, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Item 8.8, I'm sorry we have to vote. Thank you for throwing me the whisper over there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 8.8, adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the Just Grant Justice System Program for the Virginia Police Department.
I'll move.
Moved by Counsel Paulson and supported by Counsel Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Counsel Freely?
Is there any match required for this? City?
Uh, I don't think there is, but.
Just wondering.
I don't think there is, I think this is a 100% grant. Normally, these law enforcement grants have no match. Britt, do you have any information?
Correct, there is no match.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on April 28, 2023. And we'll turn this part of our council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee of the whole meeting on April 18, 2023, we had an appearance from John McNamara, World Architects, and Pat Wertz of Carl Anderson, along with George Illetson from Northern Securities to discuss the Public Safety Center project. We're working on the final designs, and we are still working, we're 99% complete in the final design of the new Public Safety Center, but we're still working through some items such as pathways for the fire trucks and such. As part of the B3 compliance, which is an energy standard we have to maintain as part of our state funding, the building needs to be 80% better than the standard requirements for energy compliance. Thus, to achieve that, we're probably going to have to buy quite a few solar panels, and it's, as Mr. McNamara explained, it's cheaper for the city to buy the solar panels directly through our own contract, because then we can get some tax credits and some rebates because if we buy them directly rather than on the bidding market. Mr. Pat Wertz, our project engineer, our project manager, I'm sorry, for the Public Safety Center, presented the cost information to the council. The estimated budget at this moment is still at $31,754,101. We're able to decrease due to site cleanup by $150,000. The budget numbers are still moving a little bit until we get the final properties purchased and just a few other site things realized. George Illetson of Northern Securities presented information on the tax impact of the Public Safety Center project. The net amount that we would have to bond after the $9.5 million grants, about $18 million, which we anticipate receiving a USDA loan for that information. The $2 million additional money that we've been seeking from the state of Minnesota is still moving its way through the House and Senate, and we are really hoping that that does come through for us. Mr. McNamara noted that we would have to make a decision soon on bidding in the open market if we're going to do that, and he's estimating an early or mid-May timeframe to do that. The hazardous materials abatement was completed April 1, 2023, and if you have driven by that area, you noticed demolition has started. Mr. Matt Reed was also available at the meeting, our engineer of record from SCH. He discussed the additional time that SCH has had to put into the 2023 street project related to the required easements and documentations of property ownership in a couple areas. This expense was not planned for, and SCH is now requesting an additional lump sum payment of $10,600 for the additional work that was required for those ownership easements, and then up to, not to exceed hourly amount of $3,500 for the construction management portion of it.
Britt, could we just move back just a moment? Could you both please clarify one more time the budget for the Public Safety Center?
$31,754,101.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that was a motion to approve, that we did approve the motion to approve the additional professional services fee for SCH in the amount of $10,600, and a construction management amount not to exceed an hourly amount of $3,500.
Okay, Counsel Biondich?
Britt, back to the Public Safety Building, when you read the portion on the solar panels, that's an additional cost over and above the cost of the project, or is that included?
That is in the budget.
It is in the, okay.
It is in the budget. But when we go out for bids, it won't be in our bid package. We will be doing a separate purchase on the side of ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Because there are, I think you might, some of the council members have might have got that thing from the League of Minnesota Cities about the tax credits that are available to cities for this one-time purchase. We're going to try to capitalize on that one.
And I think that was recommended by World that we go outside the purchase, bid or bank for our buck and recovering some money, thank you.
Correct, so you'll see that line item on the budget, but it's not, it's in the budget, it's just not going to be part of their bid package, we're going to do that separately.
Very good. So it was moved and supported at committee level to approve the SCH funding of $10,600 in the hourly rate as well?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Motley, is there any further discussion? Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So that $31 million is still really weighing on me and the amount that we're going to have to increase on the levy. But I reached out to the USDA and was transferred over to the office, I think it was in Raynard or over on that side. And one thing that I was reading, they have a grant program as well as their direct loan program. The grant program funds up to, I think with our population, 75%. So I got really excited, and I was like, tell me more about this. And when I spoke with the gentleman, I think his name is Tyler, Tyler. What he stated is, no, it wouldn't be for a project your size. However, one thing that he did tell me is that if the, if we need any additional equipment or anything like that, we could apply for a grant going forward, and they're usually maybe in the $50,000 to $80,000 range. But I just wanted to add that, that even though it's, there's nothing really available to help us in the grant world for the building, that that might be one option going forward if we need anything additional over and above with equipment. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, so thank you, Counsel Paulson. Counsel Motley?
Just a random thought, when we finally do know the numbers on this Public Safety Building, can we, I was chatting with Greg at the Public Utilities yesterday, could we enclose the potential dollar amount and mail it with the Public Utilities Bill to each citizen here so they're aware of what's coming? I believe he told me there's certain times when we can slip something into their billing, so I would like that included when we know the amount.
Sure.
Do I need to make a motion on that?
Won't have that information until the actual bond goes in. So we're talking, the payments for this building won't start till '25 or '26.
Okay.
So it's going to be quite a while before we actually know the tax impact. There's a lot that goes into it.
Okay.
The tax capacity of the city could raise. The capacity of the city is, I usually, Natalie, it's a pie shape, and it's broken up into residential, commercial, industrial, farmland, and one other category. And if any of those get bigger or smaller, even if the levy goes up, the portion goes down, because if the residential piece went down, the taxes will go down residential. So even today, though we say it's going to be an increase, that's today. When we get to that point, it might not be an actual increase on anybody if the market has grown.
Oh, that's good news.
There's a lot that goes into it, and then we do know there's a, and we're all going to have to cross our fingers, we know there's a projected LGA increase in the House bill that has been approved. If that happens, we're talking at $1.2 million increase for the city of Virginia starting next year, which then would help us not have to raise a levy for the Public Safety Center. So there's some missing, some pieces that we haven't got the information for, but yes, as soon as, we do intend to get the information out there once we know for sure what the impact is going to be.
Thanks, Britt.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Motley, thank you, Britt. Anything else? When we went back to the Public Safety Building, did we, did we have a motion to approve and support for the, for this, have we voted on that?
Yes.
We have to vote on that yet, so, so we did, we have, that has been moved and supported, and the discussion went back to the Public Safety Building, but that motion is still on the floor, moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Matt Reed also discussed the Alcott Park North Entrance Project, which has been in the works for quite a while with the Park and Rec Commission and the Brewfest. Brian Silver informed the council, the donations that have been requested and received, along with three grants from the Virginia Community Foundation, ITRRB, and Brewfest. The grant requirements for two of the grants do require that the project may be completed by the end of 2023. Estimated project at this time is estimated $118,485. It was moved and supported to approve SCH to advertise for bids for the Alcott North Entrance Project.
Motion to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Motley, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I'm sorry, further discussion, Counsel Biondich?
No, I just need to abstain as I'm employed by the Virginia Community Foundation.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, Counsel Biondich. So it has been moved and supported, there was further discussion. We voted, there's six a's and one abstention, a recusal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric Jonason, Deputy Fire Chief, reviewed the two quotes that were received for the purchase of USAR Life Detector Equipment for the fire department for the USAR team. The equipment is required by FEMA for task force teams and fortunately, the funding will come from the award for the FSAC award that we receive annually, we received for this year for the USAR team. It was moved and supported to approve the quote of the equipment, the life detector equipment from SafeWare in the amount of $18,256.88, which again is a fully reimbursed purchase.
All moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Further discussion? Just a quick note that this USAR team stands for the Urban Search and Rescue Team. There are two of them in the state of Minnesota and we started the one in the northern part of the state and did a collaborative about that. So and with this collaborative comes more grant opportunities. This is one example of a grant opportunity that's fully reimbursable. So thanks for everybody who did a hard work on that. Did we vote? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve advertising for bids for the Heating and Air Exchange Replacement at the Public Works Building.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley and supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me. We had discussion regarding accepting cash payments for monthly fitness club memberships at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. It was moved and supported to accept cash payments at the current rate of $25 for single memberships and it would be $50 for family members up to four at the fitness center at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center with no additional fees.
All moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Beyondich. Further discussion? I just, before I vote, I voted no at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And I just want a clarification because if you're, if this is a cash payment of $25 with no additional fees, that means it'll pay no taxes. So those who have a monthly fee, they pay with a credit card, pays a tax on it and, and then a credit card fee. And talking with our Park and Rec Director, Brian Silver, without, without the credit card fee, it's $27.09 a month. So paying cash, you get a discount of $25, so. And further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
Mayor, I would amend my motion. The intent was to not add additional fees, not to bypass paying sales tax.
Okay, so.
So my original motion was the $25 with no additional fee, which they were trying to put on there, but obviously there would be sales tax.
Okay, so the motion would be $25 plus the sales tax.
Tax, no additional fees.
Right, okay, thank you. So that's clarified, so that's part of the motion moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Motion passes six to one. Thank you.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to approve the parade permit for Saturday, June 17th, 2023, for the annual Land of the Loon Parade.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley. Is there supported by Counselor Beyondich? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if we did last year or not, but I remember a couple years we did have a City of Virginia tent at the Land of the Loon. Are we intending to do that this year? So I don't know if that needs to be discussed or what, but I feel like that was really informational when we had it that one year.
It really, really was. And we certainly, I don't think we need a motion or anything. We can certainly do that on behalf of the council. And then that would also lead to, does the council want to be in the parade? Would be the next question because we would do a parade application for you as well.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it, Britt.
Yes, thank you. So any further discussion on that? For the parade permit? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item was to approve the rental agreement for Alcott Park for Thursday, June 15th through Sunday, June 18th, 2023, for the Land of the Loon Festival.
Moved by Counselor Freely, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, I'm, this is probably not the proper time to bring it up, but I didn't see anything where, if we're going to be in the parade or not. I know we're going to give you an invite. And in last year,
An invite.
And last year, we kind of went around with the loon and we were supposed to be separate according to one of the organizers and she chewed me out pretty good for not being separate. And, and so I told her that, well, we'll probably make an adjustment next year, so. Thank you. Opposed. So moved and supported for the rental agreement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the request from the Dream Machines Motor Club for the annual 2023 Fuzzy Dice Cruise Night on Friday, August 18th, and the car show on Saturday, August 19th.
Moved by Counselor Beyondich, supported by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the request from Revive Virginia to conduct a food truck festival on Saturday, September 16th, 2023, on Chestnut Street.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Further discussion? Manja manja that day. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Discussion was held regarding the naming rights agreement for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center and the proposed addendum from the Iron Trail Motors. It was moved and supported to review the remaining rights, the naming rights amendment addendum regarding a raffle agreement and appointment of a 501(c)(3) organization.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion?
All moved. Is that, yeah, so moved.
Moved by Counselor Freely. Is there support? By Counselor Johnson. Further discussion? Counselor Freely.
Has that been accomplished then? I mean, we've reviewed it and we've determined that that's the way we go forward? With existing 501(c)(3) or those that wish to create one?
Well, I think we approved that language in the, in the new agreement. That's what we're approving. And then we discussed how we're going to accomplish that within that structure. So we're approving the language here and we got to figure out how we're going to administrate that based on the language in that lease agreement.
Thank you.
So it has been moved and supported. Further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Could we add that to our next Committee of the Whole Meeting? Since I have ideas just brewing, that'd be great. And I think we'll be able to figure it out. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Moved, it was moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Freely. Further discussion? I just, for the record, I know there's a lot of opportunities here, but I think you're putting the city on the spot. And we'll talk about the community meeting because we're going to be voting on this tonight about, about the language in there. I don't like the language that's in there only because it creates a big responsibility for the city itself. I believe Iron Trail Motors is a community-minded organization, obviously from the naming rights and all the other things that they've been trying to do. This is another part of them donating a car and designing a raffle. They, they give the car away, they donate the car, the organization does the raffle, they sell the raffle tickets and all the money goes to that organization. So if it's in the language in the contract, it has to be agreed upon by both parties. It's hard for me to figure out who we pick to be the recipient of this car. And then, then the next year, then the next year, the next year. Somebody's always going to be left out. So I think it's, the burden should be placed, and I guess probably not a good term, burden, but I think the responsibility should be placed on Iron Trail Motors to do that entire thing. If they want to have a 501(c)(3), they can pick one. They want to donate that car to that particular 501(c)(3), they can make that decision moving forward because it comes from a private business. But now, now the city's involved in this and I just don't think that that language is necessary, from my opinion. But has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Aye.
Sorry about that.
Counselor Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Barnes-Elliott? And Mayor Coffey?
Uh, no. Motion passes six to one. Thank you.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to approve a gambling request from the Massabi Humane Society to conduct a raffle that was held on April 22nd, 2023.
All moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
We had area landlords present at the meeting to discuss the rental registration and inspection ordinance. After a healthy discussion, it was moved and supported to direct staff to schedule a meeting regarding review of the fee schedule for the rental code ordinance.
All moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Freely, been supported by Counselor Motley.
Can I support?
Oh, you support that or not?
Yes, for discussion.
Support by Counselor Motley for discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Motley?
Whenever we figure out the date, can it be like five or later just because I'm working?
Yeah, I think it'd be best for everybody who could attend later on in the evening that would be affected by this or have some questions. We can do that in the evening, so you'll be able to attend as well. Very good, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
We did close the meeting to discuss IAFF negotiations per Minnesota Statute 13D03. And then we also discussed a request to purchase real estate in Virginia as per Minnesota Statute 13D05 subdivision 3. When we came out of the closed session, it was moved and supported to direct staff to investigate the potential sale of city-owned real estate property in Virginia.
All moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Freely?
Just out of curiosity, so like, let's say, for example, there has to be some core sampling taken from that lot and it finds out to be polluted, like the area where we're going to provide a garage for a bread distributor, would we then incur the costs of having to mitigate that issue? And, or we know what sat there in the past and is there the potential that that could happen?
Uh, yes, if, if.
So, yeah, I think there should be further investigation with regard to.
Yeah, so before I, before we get to the point of doing borings, I do do a history check and a lot of times that stops before we get any farther. The bread lot, like you mentioned, that one was, we have phoned, it was dumping from illegal sources that caused that contamination.
And can we convey that to the people interested?
Yes, yes, yes.
So that they know that this isn't a done deal, but it's something that needs to be looked into, researched, and then we move forward.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
No further items from that meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Britt. Move to item 9.2, the Personnel Committee meeting that was held on April 20th, 2023. And turn this over to the committee chair, Counselor Paulson or any other member of the Personnel Committee, which is, consists of Counselor Freely and Counselor Beyondich. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. The Personnel Committee met on April 20th and had three items on our agenda. Under item A, allow staff to negotiate with AFSMI regarding the LOU for the airport assistant. And the conversation that took place, the, it was the wording in the, in the original LOU that added the amount that Virginia and Ebelith contribute dollars to the pot for this, the duties of this position. And that amount was added to her base, to the employee's base wage. And so what the discussion was is to clean it up. We felt, well, a few of us felt that it was muddied a little bit and so we cleaned up the language. So it will be, I guess, staff will be discussing that between the union, the language between the union and then our city staff. But the intent then would be to agree to the increase, but just formulate it differently in the, word it differently in the LOU so it's not on the base wage. It would be like an additional stipend or what have you. So that was moved and supported. And then item.
Should we, will you vote on that one?
Want to vote on that?
So, thank you, Counselor Paulson. So it was moved and supported at the Personnel Committee level to bring it forward to the council for, for a vote to allow staff, or direct staff, allow staff to negotiate with AFSMI regarding the LOU for the airport assistant. And apply the method of payment based upon the negotiations and the discussions at the Personnel Committee. Is there any, has been moved and supported? Moved by Counselor Freely, but supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Paulson?
Mayor, the next item is B. It's to allow city staff to develop a job description for an IT position in the city. And our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis, explained that we have quite a lot of IT needs now and feels that, especially with the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, when they're bringing in different conferences, they're finding that they have no person to go to to actually set up or do any of the electrical, well, basically electrical or plugins. So we had discussed putting a job description together and talking about that further since it will probably be in need in the future.
Very good, thank you, Counselor Paulson. So it has been moved and supported at the Personnel Committee level to allow staff to develop a job description for an IT position in the city of Virginia. Looking for a motion? Moved by Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else from the Personnel Committee, Counselor Paulson?
The other item was up in the consent agenda and that was regarding the pesticide license, which we've just voted on already.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay. No other items to come before the Personnel Committee. We'll move to item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Is there a counsel that would like to provide a commission liaison report this evening? Counselor Motley?
So I have two this evening. The first will be the monthly park and recreation update. The Park and Recreation Commission spent the majority of their time discussing the tree policy. They're making some revisions and going to ask Alan Bear, a local forester, to give his comments and then finalize it next month to begin getting staff feedback. Last week, we hosted the SME Conference at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. The conference went well with them meeting their goals of attendees. We hope they return for a third year next year. This past week, in the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, hosted the Iron Range Earth Fest with over 1,200 attendees and they plan to come back again next year. Music in the park will begin in June in Alcott Park by the fountain with different bands every Tuesday night. This year, we have both local, regional, and national acts booked. And then the other one is going to be the Public Utilities Commission meeting I attended yesterday. Greg informed the commission that the asbestos removal has begun on the Malone Hall and the contractor will begin demo late June to mid-July of this summer. Because of the close proximity to Sixth Avenue, there will be some lane closures. Demo is expected to last about a week. And then the last thing, which is actually kind of interesting, it's in regards to the NEMPA contract update. With the NEMPA agency, 13 Irons Range utility communities renegotiated With the NEMPA agency, 13 Irons Range utility communities renegotiated the Minnesota Power Wholesale Electric Contract. The group savings was 23.1%. BPU savings was 25% directly to the customers. The 2022 savings for the Virginia customers was $2.3 million directly. Thank you, Greg, for your great work. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor, uh, Motley. Okay, uh, any other Commission Liaison Reports this evening? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know I'm the alternate for the school board, um, but I did listen, the, the meeting last night was really long. It was three and a half hours longer.
I know, it was, uh...
Or longer, um, but I just wanted to, um, some of the highlights, they, they had a lot of discussion about, uh, where they're at with their building and, um, process and their, uh, percentage of completion. Um, that was like the first hour and whatever. Um, but anyway, so I guess maybe some pertinent, uh, to bring forward to the council is they, they also discussed the 1404 building that they voted to continue discussion with VEDA regarding that property. And, um, I guess we'll see how that conversation goes. Um, they talked about possible, there were three different ways to possibly fund that. Um, and the figure I think that was thrown out was, I know the, the negotiation hasn't been, but I think what they were estimating in the $800,000 range, so, um, yeah, so I just wanted to report on that. And, um, also that Rock Ridge High School grand opening will be Thursday, May 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That's all, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Paulson. Any other, uh, Commission Liaison Reports from a counselor? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, I attended the library commission on a snowy Thursday night. Um, and I won't go into a lot of details, but, um, year-to-date circulation for the library is 20,977, um, things coming in and out with 55 new borrowers in March. Um, and Jody's got all kinds of cool things lined up, the summer program is ready to go. Um, there's painting, there's a book, or, uh, the annual meeting's coming up, the, the tea's cutting up, all available on the library website. They have a beautiful calendar now, you can click on the, the event and then it allows you to save it right to your calendar right away. So, um, they're doing a great job over there. The new librarian started last week, got to meet her. Um, and, um, yeah, it, it's, the library's the face of the city. It's the most utilized city building by far, um, by the general public. I know the Iron Trail Motors might come close to special events, but, um, the staff do a great job there. And Jody, if you want to, if you would like to, or we can wait to your department head. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Johnson. Okay, any other Commission Liaison Reports this evening? Here, Wood, item number 11, Department Head Reports. Britt, do you have a report? Uh, Brian, anything, uh, further to offer?
I, I do, Mayor. The, uh, date and time of that hearing is June 1st at 1:30 on the, on that property.
June 1st, 1:30, is it in person or by Zoom?
Uh, it would be by Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, um, Mayor. Brian, would you be able to email, um, the Kingsleys that Zoom link?
Actually, looking back, I apologize, it is in person.
It is in person. Would you, um, email the Kingsleys?
Absolutely.
And, um, just let them know of that date and time?
Yep.
If they want to be present, thank you.
Again, uh, that, uh, evidence, your hearing is scheduled for June 1st, uh, 2023 at the Virginia Courthouse and you may attend in person. It's a public hearing, public meeting or public court, uh, case. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, Sheri, do you have anything, uh, to add? Anything you need, other than you're working on the budget?
Oh, no. Yeah, the budget too, but, um, the audit is almost done, so for 2022. So I'm looking for a good report. So they're finishing up this week and, uh, we have a little bit of housekeeping that we'll be bringing to you in a resolution for the due-to, due-from, where we, um, after we do adjusting journal entries. Um, one of my staff is out now for, she thinks a week, but I think it's going to be a little more, um, for medical reasons. So, um, when she comes back, then I have another staff member going out for two weeks. So, um, we're going to be a little shorthanded there, so patient. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And I think that new hire that we made, uh, will help us with the, uh, the one, uh, re, re, the one request, uh, in the last few years audits about separation of duties, we'll be able to accomplish that, so that kind of off the checklist as well. Uh, Counselor Beyondich?
When that audit is complete, will we, will the auditors come in and give a report on that to the council?
Yes, we're hoping that, yeah, we're planning on it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Sheri. Uh, any other Department Head Reports? Uh, Jody, do you have any Department Head Report? Jody Gribonowski, our library director, uh, welcome once again and thank you for coming. I ask you to come every, every week and so we look forward to your report.
So, um, yes, and Steve alluded to a lot of stuff. Well, one of the reasons I'm here, it is National Library Week, so we have been very busy at the library. Um, we did, we partnered with 321 Art Studio and they applied for a grant and we had four painting sessions for adults and today they got to show off their work and, um, we had a little party at the library this afternoon, so that was great. Um, tomorrow, if you want to get a little bit of a teaser for Moana, which the Lyric is putting on in May, come to the library around 2:30, they're going to do a little bit of a show for you and I think there's also going to be some tickets they'll give away, so there you go. And if you follow us on Facebook and Instagram, we're also going to do a random drawing for some tickets on Friday. Um, we had baby storytime this morning. Oh my gosh, did they have fun in the kids' room? And then, um, we have a playdate for, um, zero to five on Friday at 10:30 in the library. So that is just for this week. May is going to be crazy. We have our last book club meeting on May 4th at 1 o'clock at the library. Um, you can come even if you haven't read the book or watch the movie. We are doing The Fault in Our Stars and so you can do either one. Come and hang out. We usually get through like three questions, um, just because there's usually so much going on with that and have a great time. If you use Libby and you want to know more, we've got some drop-ins in May, on May 11th at, from 1:00 to 2:00, and then Monday, May 15th from 11:00 to 12:00. Whether you use an Android or an iPhone, an iPad, if you have it downloaded and you have some questions like, how do I speed up the speaker? Or how do I slow it down? How do I search for, I found this awesome reader, how do I search for that? So, um, we've got, Rebecca's going to do those two drop-ins for you, so if you want to know more about that. We also have, um, our craft bingo and snacks coming up for, um, the anime and manga club, which is May 10th after school, it's an early out day. That's May. Again, it is National Library Week, the theme is there's more to the story. And as Steve pointed out, there's always stuff going on at the library, but also some of those numbers, we are really watching those numbers to see if we're meeting the needs of our population. Um, Sophia started last week, she is going to start doing some outreach for our older population because, as you know, Ms. Stephanie is doing a really awesome job with our, um, our young people. And then this summer, so, big, I will bring information to you closer to June, but it, we'll start putting it on our webpage. Kickoff is June 10th, which is a Saturday, we will have a performer and any young person that comes, they will get a free book that day, the friends will be there. Um, yes, he mentioned the tea, I am sorry to say, though, it is, um, they have met capacity. We, they do have a wait list for any last-minute people, but that is Thursday at noon and it's at the Elks Lodge. But yes, a summer reading, we have got events every week, including, we're going to have Big Trucks, which honestly, I think is more exciting for the, um, the big kids. And yes, I mean the adults, um, more than the littles, so that's one thing that we are definitely doing. Um, we will have our end fair and if you want to, you know, come dunk me, I will definitely be dressed as a mermaid. Um, we also have some school staff that have said they would do it. So I think that is it for right now. If you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Jody the Mermaid?
I have a mermaid tail and everything.
Looking forward to that.
So, and you can blame the commission because they decided I needed a mermaid tail, so I found one.
Very good, excellent. Thank you, Jody, very much. Uh, any questions, comments, uh, for our library director? Exciting, Jody, very exciting, thank you.
You're welcome.
I love your enthusiasm. Okay. Any other Department Head Reports? Okay, we'll move to item 12, Counselor Reports. Does any Counselor have a report they'd like to give this evening? Uh, seeing none, uh, I do have a couple of items I'd like to bring forward to you. Uh, first of all, um, on, uh, Tuesday, May 2nd, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon is a press conference and 1:30 a Central Center time a meeting that's going to be held at the Mountain Iron, uh, uh, High School. And it is a Subcommittee on Energy and Minerals Resources. Uh, Chairman Congressman Pete Staub, a Republican from Minnesota, is hosting, uh, the members of, of this mining caucus. Everybody's welcome, uh, there's a RSVP if you'd like to participate in that. Uh, the US Representative Jack Bergman from Michigan, a US Representative Larry Buckshin from Indiana, Representative Mike Collins from Georgia, Representative Foulcher, Russ Foulcher from Idaho, Representative Greg Pence from Indiana, and Representative Rob Whitman from Virginia will all be there as well. Uh, so, uh, they'll be giving a, a, uh, oversight field hearing on examining mineral wealth in Northeast Minnesota. So, uh, at the Mountain Iron Buell Public School Auditorium is going to be the, uh, the, uh, the meeting at 1:30 and at 1 o'clock is the press conference in the gym. So, uh, anybody who wants to go and attend, they're welcome to do that. I know we have a conflict in the city where we do have a, um, well, I think our Board of Equalization is meeting on May 2nd. I can't remember what time that is, so there'll be a conflict there, but those who are not being, going to be at the Board of Equalization might be a great opportunity to, to go to this event. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, is the end of the month for the last Wednesday of the month where we host the, uh, Mayor's, uh, Iron Range Mayor's Meeting through, uh, RAMS. And we're going to be talking about this very subject and some issues with respect to the current, uh, legislation and, and the, uh, and the, uh, decisions made, uh, by our, uh, United States government regarding mining and some additional restrictions with respect to that. So we'll be discussing that in a letter to be forwarded, uh, through by RAMS with, with the blessing of the Range Mayors about pleading to, uh, ensure that we maintain the, uh, mining operations here in Northeast Minnesota. And, uh... The, um, okay, a little legislative update, I did talk to our lobbyist, uh, Ron, uh, Mike Jerick, also talked to Representative Blizegard over the weekend. Uh, he had indicated that, uh, there's a bunch of bills that are, uh, in the ominous bill, everything's together in there. And so there's a bunch of different legislations that some support, some don't support. And, uh, the gambling legislation is in there with respect to E-Tabs. And, uh, that appears as though that did pass, that bill did pass to restrict the use of those E-Tabs at the House of Representatives level. The Senate has yet to vote on it, whether it goes through or not, I don't know, but we're looking for that. And so there's a lot of things going on. Uh, the property tax bill, uh, and that's going to be, uh, hopefully done and then it'll go to, uh, a conference committee, uh, then back to the floor and then to the governor for signature. And the good news is, is that in both the House and the Senate, our debt limit exemption is, is still solidly in that bill. In addition to that, there's a $2 million request that we made to help offset some of the costs of the increased inflationary costs of the public safety building. Uh, it doesn't appear as though there's going to be a bonding bill again this year. They just can't come to an agreement in that regard. Not to say that it won't and not to say that the government may or may not call a special session, but there are enough votes, uh, uh, on the majority side of the legislature. Instead of, of providing a bonding cap money, they, they do have the authority to, uh, to give some cash allotments. And that's what they likely are intending to do in the event there's no bonding bill. So our $2 million is still in there. You don't, we don't know until the very end when that's going to be, but we should know about our debt limit ceiling, uh, uh, should pass and we should know that by May the 16th. So as soon as we get that information, it'll be disseminated to Britt and she'll disseminate to all of us as well. And so there's other things that are going on with the legislature with respect to, uh, mining and with respect to economic development and respect to potential housing opportunities and funding available. Uh, the Minnesota House Finance, uh, uh, entity, they plan on, uh, there's a, a big influx of money there that could be, uh, utilized for certain types of housing in, in, in communities, uh, primarily related to housing that, for workforce housing or, or subsidized low, low-income housing as well. So those are all being just, uh, looked at at the legislative, among other bills, but the two that affect us are a $2 million allocation and our debt limit exemption. Uh, and so that's moving through, so that's, uh, encouraging. And then last but not least, and, uh, we normally don't get any positive feedback from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, but we're, you know, we have a lot of things going on there and they have a big organization. But we did receive a certificate of commendation from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency in recognition of the exceptional compliance with its Minnesota Pollution Control Agency standards of wastewater permitting during the 2022 review period. So we have invested in a wastewater treatment plant, we do have a, 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 a modern as a facility as you can get with some exemptions coming on, but we have spent a significant amount of unfunded mandates, money, there were unfunded mandate to, uh, add additional chemicals into our water and to fix our divestors and those kind of things. So even though this combination is welcome, uh, it, it was, and it was, it was as a significant cost to the city of Virginia above and beyond. So with, with, with these, uh, pollution, uh, uh, requirements, uh, it makes it difficult for us to fund, but this was very encouraging and we did meet, meet the compliance check for that. So thank you for the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for recognizing all the hard work that a wastewater treatment plant has, uh, delivers to us every day, so. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything else? Uh, hearing and seeing no other, uh, items to come before the council meeting today, we will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 at 5:30 PM, right here in the, uh, council chambers. Thank you. Everybody have a safe week, thanks for everybody's hard work. We stand adjourned. Thank you and good night.